Are we good? Thank you. All righty. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'll call this meeting to order. If we stand, please. Councilman Hux will have our invocation. Please send our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we come to you in prayer tonight to thank you and to recognize you as a source of our many blessings. Help us to always be mindful of those that have sacrificed our lives, their lives, liberty and freedom and quality of life that we so enjoy. Help us to honor their sacrifice by serving our land that pleases you and glorifies your name.
I plead the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic of Liberty and Justice for all. Thank you, David. First time on our agenda, we have two special presentations. The first one will be by Jim Noel, Director of Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Sir, we're ready to hear you.
Okay.
Is that what they... Oh, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
That's great.
...was out there and watching. Thank you. Update or a briefing on the...
And that's the last time I'll say that. And that'll shorten the presentation by 20 minutes. So, moving forward, we're going to call it the RIFA, which is what we all refer to it to. And if I'm not mistaken, you all had a presentation, or council did, probably in 2018. And that was a while ago, when this entity was being formed. Probably Steve Mead, who was, at the time, it was Patton-Warnham-Hatten-Diemanstein, gave a presentation. He was assisting, going out and speaking to all of the peninsula communities in Gloucester about what a RIFA was and whether you'd be interested in joining or not. So, I don't know how many members of council were here then and recall that, but it's time for an update. I think it's 2023, so it's been a while. So, kind of wanted to refresh everyone about what this organization is. I suspect a lot of your citizens may not be aware of this through no fault of any ones. It's just that's how it kind of unfurls sometimes. So, thought it'd be a good idea to kind of go back through the RIFA, how it's formed, its purpose, some progress we've made, and then talk about some future steps. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And I should say, I was with York County for a long time. Many of you may know, I was the Economic Development Director there 28 years plus and retired back in May. And the Hampton Roads Alliance, your regional economic development marketing agency, took this organization under its wing, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. And they asked me if I would come back in a part-time basis to help manage it for them. And I was most happy to do that. This is something I strongly believe in. It's a great regional program. So, RIFAs have been around for a long time. This one was formed in 2018. You can really think of them most simply as a regional economic development authority. And you all have an economic development authority. They do basically the same types of things. They try to promulgate investment in communities. They can generate by land. They can sell land. They can issue bonds. They can do many of the same things that your industrial development authorities do. But you do it together. Multiple localities can join, and you don't just need two to form one. And as you all know, we can't do anything in Virginia unless the state tells us we can. And so, the General Assembly passed the Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Act, which authorized this type of organization. We went out, and the impetus for this thing really came from the Go Virginia Grant Program, if you all remember that some time ago. And all of the economic development directors on the peninsula got together, Mr. Callis, Mr. Carazza. We all got together along with Gloucester and talked about, what should we apply for? Is this a great program to promulgate regional economic development? How can we take advantage of the Go Virginia program? So, we submitted an application to form a RIFA because a RIFA promulgates regional economic development. So, it was a perfect match under the Go Virginia program, and that's how we were able to hire Mr. Mead to get the legal assistance we needed to do that. So, the first members, and I'm very happy that Pecosin was one of the first, all of the peninsula localities participated along with Gloucester. And that was back in March of 2019. And then subsequent to that, Franklin, Chesapeake, and Isle of Wight all came on board in 2020. So, a RIFA, just like your economic development authority has a board, and the way it's structured, you get two primary members, and then you have two alternates in case they can't serve. And then you have a board of directors, a chair and a vice chair, who are listed here. And Mr. Hux has been good enough to serve as secretary a number of times. He's going into his second term, and we greatly appreciate his participation and support. So, Pecosin is well represented on the RIFA board. One of the things we didn't think about when we first formed it was, who's going to staff this thing? And it kind of worked out pretty well for me in the long run, but it was a problem. And I did it as York Director, and the city of Newport News was kind enough to lend a staff person named Derek Perry. And along with Mr. Mead, we kind of limped along, and we managed the organization and kept it rolling and got the key building blocks in place, insurance, and the audit and all of those things. But we didn't have full-time staff. So, before I left, we talked to Doug Smith, who is the Executive Director of the Hampton Roads Alliance, and said, you know, this would be a perfect thing to add to your portfolio of services for your member communities. What this is all about is fostering regional economic development. What does the Alliance do? It promotes regional economic development. It serves all of our communities on the peninsula, Gloucester, and the South Side. This would be a great thing to add, and would you do it for free? And believe it or not, he said yes. So, they took that on. We did a memorandum of understanding, or I'm sorry, memorandum of agreement between the Alliance and the RIFA, and that went into place in August of 2022. And I was fortunate enough to be asked, at least at this point, to help manage the organization, which is why I'm here this evening. So, we did understand you've got to have a little bit of money to operate something like this. As I said, there's an audit, there's liability insurance, there's legal fees. Any organization has some operating costs, just unavoidable. But we made this what I think is a very reasonable thing, considering the potential that this could have for our localities in generating revenue. So, less than 50,000, it's 2,000 bucks a year. Greater than 50,000 population, it's 4,000. And perhaps the most genius thing about the RIFA is, you can be a member of the RIFA, but in any given project that two or more communities might want to engage in, you can play or not play. It's your choice. If you think it's a good thing for your community, you can participate. If you don't, you can still be a member of the RIFA, and there's no other obligation. You don't have to play in that particular project. So, it gives some great flexibility. And if you want to participate, then your elected body has to vote to do just that. As part of that, if you participate in any given project, and just so you have an example, you know, a lot of localities that had these rivers in the western part of the state, they went together and bought land for industrial parks. That's a pretty common use of a RIFA. They couldn't afford to develop one individually, so they banded together to buy the land, put the infrastructure in. Then you get to share the tax revenue. And as you know, again, in Virginia, we're all kind of fiefdoms unto ourselves unless there's some sort of revenue sharing agreement, and that's what the RIFA allows to happening. So, you can go in, invest in a project, if the businesses come in and pay taxes, then that revenue goes back to the participating locality. So, this really does, in a tangible way, promote regional economic development. So, as I just said, you can play or not play in any given project. The cost of that project is only shared among those that decide to participate. There's no pressure to be involved in it. And to date, we have one active project that I'm so happy to say Pecosin is a part of, and that's the Kings Creek Commerce Center. That project is in York County. Some of you go back, you may know it as the Fuel Farm Property. If you know where Water Country Parkway is, as you're going down 199, and that turns into Penniman, before you get to the Parkway, before you run into Cheetah Manics, if you know what I'm talking about. The property's on the right-hand side there. It was 432 acres of state surplus property. The RIFA communities that decided to participate in this project, and I'll talk more about that in a minute, acquired the property through, I think, a very, very creative way. So, it's 432 acres, and there was a solar company interested in ground leasing 250 acres of that property. A price got set for the property by the state of $1,350,000. We were able to do a ground lease with the solar company, a 32-year ground lease for $1,350,000. So, we were able, the participating members of the RIFA, to acquire 432 acres of property. Now, again, 250 acres got leased to the solar company for that same price. Ground lease equaled the price to acquire the property. The net cost to the communities that participated was about $70,000. And as you'll see in a minute, we ended up with over 80 acres of developable property to market and sell and hopefully try to attract inward investment. We also got a Go Virginia grant. It was actually tied to the original one to do site preparedness engineering. You can see an ALTO survey, geotech investigation, and master planning, and that work's going on right now on that property that the communities that are participating in this own that property. The study is going ahead, and that will greatly enhance the opportunity to market this property. The more information we have, the better prepared it is, easier it is to attract someone to invest in it. So, you can see the area, at the very top, the KDC leased area, it was KDC Solar. When we closed on the property, they turned around and sold it to Dominion Virginia Power, which we fully expected them to do. It lined up with Dominion's goal of adding more renewable energy to their portfolio. That was not a problem. That was fine. It didn't impact the ground lease at all. So, you can see the area that the solar company or Dominion will occupy. The green areas are the developable acreage that the RIFA now controls, the communities that are participating in this. And it's just a little bit over 80 acres. And as I said, we're having an engineering company do all of the work necessary to be able to effectively market that property. So, when you form, do a project, then you have to have a budget for that project. And this is the budget for the Kings Creek Commerce Center. So, these are the communities that are participating, and we were very excited that Isle of Wight participated. It showed that interest from the South Side, which I think is a very, very good thing. And so, the way this works, the money you put in is what you get out. So, when we sell land out there, lease land, generate tax revenue, your proportionate investment is what you will get in return. So, as you can see here, York County has 20,000 into it, which is a little bit less than 50%. They will get that much in revenue from any revenue that's generated on the property. And we're hopeful that that's what's going to happen here in the near term. So, where do we go from here? We want to have all of the Hampton Roads localities participate in this. We think it's a terrific opportunity for everyone, and everyone needs to be a part of it. So, one of the things I will be doing, along with Doug Smith, who is the Director of the Hampton Roads Alliance, we're going to be making presentations this spring and this summer to all the communities that are currently not members. They've all expressed interest. I fully believe they will all ultimately become members, and I think that's going to make an important statement. And it's interesting, the Alliance just had their annual meeting, and they brought in a site selector, the guy that just did the Hyundai project that went to Savannah. And the focus there was on mega sites, but I had an opportunity to speak with him one-on-one, and he said that this RIFA was something that would be very attractive to these companies. Companies want to see investment of communities working together. They want to see sites, particularly if it's a large one, for other companies, suppliers that... that may be around them. And so if there's other communities involved, you can spread the wealth even further, and a RIFA project could potentially generate investment in your community, even though the main project may be in an adjacent community. And obviously, if it's a big project, it has jobs for all of our citizens. So the benefits are many. The other thing we want to do is we want to get another project underway. We've got the Kings Creek Commerce Center underway, but we want to do more. And, you know, it's a wide-open, really, arc of what you can do. The RIFA could be part of a public-private partnership. It could do a lot of different things. So our really only limitation is how creative we want to be to use this tool in the future. But I really think that if you look at this logically, regional development is the way of the future. I think it's something that's going to be very, very important. And the other very interesting thing that it does for a smaller community that may not have the resources to develop a mega site or an industrial park, you can invest in another community and reap the reward from that. So Williamsburg, Pecosin, that may not have a lot of land for economic development, could partner with Isle of Wight County on a huge site, and then the tax revenue that's generated there, you get that return, consummate with what your investment is. So I think it presents some really unique opportunities for all of the localities. We're being very conservative and measured in how we move this thing forward, but I think in the future, it can do some really good things. And with the Hampton Roads Alliance helping to market it, they're out there pushing Hampton Roads all across the world, they're going to take advantage of this, and they're going to use this as a tool to bring in more investment and create more opportunity for our citizens. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Jim?
Yeah, is that the extent, those communities you listed there, as far west as Southampton, as far north as Williamsburg?
No. I mean, we can go to the eastern shore. We can go, we are not limited. The only reason that that was in place is kind of those are the localities that are part of the Hampton Roads Alliance. So it's kind of a logical...
Okay.
But no, in fact, and I've talked to Doug about this, the RIFA has no bounds to be confined just to the Hampton Roads Alliance communities. We could go, as I said, maybe Wallops Island would be an interesting part of the RIFA.
I was just wondering, because Hampton Roads kind of means one thing, eastern Virginia means another.
Well, and we did that purposely. We named it Eastern Virginia because we did not want to limit ourselves. Gives us a wider, wider number of places to go market this.
Other questions? Anyone? If not, Jim, thank you so much for being here.
My pleasure. Glad to be here.
Appreciate you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
David, thank you for your input. All right, let's move on to our next recognition, and that's going to be for retired Sheriff Danny Diggs. It's going to be hard to not be able to call you Danny, excuse me, Sheriff Diggs, but I think it'll, you know, we'll be calling you Senator Diggs shortly. So Danny, if you would, if you would, join me at the podium.
Let's see. I think everyone here knows Danny, is familiar with Danny, and probably a lot of his history. Danny Diggs served as Sheriff of York County and Pecosin from January 1, 2000 to January 1, 2023. During his time as sheriff, Danny served with great honesty and integrity, and I know there are two traits that Danny holds very dear. Danny's career took him different places in different positions, but it all started in 1976, when he began his service in law enforcement as a dispatcher for the Pecosin Police Department at age 19. That's been a while back. Danny's commitment to serving as a sheriff is unmatched, and he is revered throughout the Commonwealth. Danny will be remembered as a sheriff who was tough on crime and sympathetic to the victims affected by it. As Danny enters retirement, we thank him for his dedication to our city, his service to the County of York, and his service to the Commonwealth of Virginia. Danny's career has been one of great success. He has greatly supported his oath, and throughout his distinguished career, he has brought great credit, not only on himself, but also the city of Pecosin and the County of York. Danny, we pray for you and your family's good health, prosperity, and happiness. Tonight is bittersweet for a lot of us in so many ways. We are saddened by Danny's well-deserved retirement, but look forward to his continued service to the Commonwealth. And so Danny, with all of that said, it is my honor on behalf of City Council and the residents of Pecosin to present you with this plaque to thank you for your dedication to our city and for all you've done during your many years of service. We wish you Godspeed, and I wish you the best in your run for the Senate of Virginia. And the plaque reads, "Presented to J.D. Danny Diggs, and grateful appreciation for your many years of outstanding service as a York-Pecosin sheriff, January 1, 2000 to January 1, 2023." We appreciate you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Okay. Did you want...
Sure. Gordon, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, thank you very much for recognizing me, and I'm glad you did mention that I was raised here in Pecosin, started my law enforcement career here in Pecosin as a dispatcher at a tender young age, and who knew that I would eventually end up to be the sheriff of Pecosin for all these years? And it's been my honor and privilege to serve each and every one of you, but I certainly didn't do it alone. It was every member of the community, every deputy I ever had, every civilian employee who went out there and did all the hard work that I got the credit for. And so they have really made me look good, given me a good reputation, and I thank you for your kind words and your recognition of me. And Gordon, I know that you were able to serve the city of Pecosin as a Pecosinite in Richmond, and I look to be the second Pecosinite to be in Richmond, serving the interests of the city of Pecosin in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is our audience with visitors. If there is someone in the audience who'd like to address counsel on any issue, topic, we'd be delighted to hear from you at this time. Okay, see you, no one. We'll move on to the approval of our minutes, our regular session, January 23, 2023.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor, as amended.
Okay. All right, we have a motion made. Second, we adopt the regular session minutes for January 23, 2023. Any comments and questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aha.
Councilwoman Fox?
Aye.
Councilman Fogg?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Let's move on to one and only public hearing tonight is a request for a conditional use permit by Caleb Howard for the operation of a storage yard to be located at 789 Pecosin Avenue, tax map parcel 19-1-135. It is Zone R1, single-family residence. Mr. Canelo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you just read, one public hearing before you and other members of council tonight. The ad for what you just read was ran in February. Adjacent letters were sent to property owners on February 6 for the city council meeting. The code consideration tonight, Mr. Mayor, why this is before you is because storage yards are not permitted in the R1 residential district, only in the B2 business commercial district and the general commercial district. Back to use per the application to park approximately four work trucks and store material in existing structure. There is an existing garage on the lot, and I'll get to that in just one minute. The city code definition, Mr. Mayor, of a storage yard is a yard area in which materials, equipment, and/or vehicles used for construction, excavating, freight, or similar activities are stored or kept. Storage yards may operate as a primary or an accessory use. The proposed site, 789 Pecosin Avenue, a lot I'm sure all of you are familiar with, the former home to the Tom Hunt Store, right between Reggins and 789 and 1/2 Pecosin Avenue. You can see in the rear of the property, the existing garage. This is our zoning map, our current zoning map. I put a little R there, just so we're all on the same page where we're at. The R there is the lot where Reggins Ford is, and the small X, and the small lot beside it is the lot we're discussing this evening. Consideration of the comprehensive plan, the future land use designation as found as a comp plan is for low-density residential. Given the size and general dimensions of the lot, residential development may be challenging. Additionally, its proximity to lots which are currently zoned for B1 office professional or currently used as commercial lots should be considered as a future land use designation is limited business. Here's the future land use map. I understand it may be a little hard to see, but you can see pretty centrally located in the map just north of the large green area, which is the high school and primary school. You see the small area of pink, that's the current B1 zone, and then the yellow to the right of it is designated as a low-density residential in the future land use map. The conditions for a storage yard, if permitted by right, in the BT, B2, or GC district are as follows, and I would point your direction to one particular condition, and that's condition C. I'll read it. It says, "For storage yards abutting a public or private street or residential district, a 15-foot landscape buffer shall be maintained between any required method of screening and the property line, abutting the public or private street and/or residential district in accordance with Article 10, Section 8 of this ordinance." That's important to keep in mind. It is one condition that the applicant has asked for relief particularly. Here are the recommended conditions for your consideration, Mr. Mayor, and I can come back to this in just one second. I want to direct your attention to the site plan first. You can see, just because of the size of the lot, that a 15-foot buffer on either side would have really restricted the use of the lot and made the recommended use, what may be the conditional use, not feasible. So we have tailored the conditions of storage yards as if it were permitted by right to meet the request of the applicant for conditions to be amended, and we encouraged him to speak with his neighbors and ask if they were agreeable to allowing him to extend his screening or fencing to the property line rather than having a 15-foot buffer as required by the code, and they were all agreeable to that. We asked him if he could have them agree to a letter, a signed letter stating all of that, and that's included in your memo. So for this use, this particular application, we have allowed the following is new. "If fencing or screening does not exist around the perimeter of the property, it shall be installed by the applicant. Fencing that currently exists between adjoining property owners may be utilized, but at such time it is damaged or removed shall be replaced by the applicant, as indicated in the letter signed by adjacent property owners dated 11/18/2022. Upon the assurance of a conditional use permit and prior to the operation of the storage yard, the applicant shall present a landscaping plan for the front buffer to the community development staff to be approved by the zoning administrator. The landscape buffer shall be maintained in good condition, that you'll find in the requirements of a storage yard if permitted by right." So we've asked the applicant that in the front, the fence not encroaching to the front setback, and that a landscape buffer that otherwise would be required is established in the front of the storage yard. The fourth condition, one you're all very familiar with, is that the use must comply with local, state, and federal permits, licenses, regulations, et cetera. If at any time the use is operating in violation of any of the regulations, the city council may revoke the permit. If at any time the specified use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, the permit shall become nonvoid. And six, city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. One condition, this was recommended for your approval unanimously by the planning commission with one minor amendment, and that is the condition you'll find in D. It typically says that the hours of operation are to be from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. They recommended approval with the amendment that the start time be 7:00 AM rather than 6:00. This is the letter I referenced that the applicant had his neighbor sign. I won't read that unless you'd like me to. I'm sure you all had a chance to read it in your memo. Again, this is the proposed site plan, and I am happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Thomas, well done. Questions, Thomas?
I've got one. We talked about the surfacing. I know Mr. Howard's here. You're talking about permeable surface, or you're just talking asphalt or something like that?
There, the surface, let me get to...
I know the...
...back to the conditions. He can speak a little more to that, but there is some language that speaks to it, and I can, let me reference that real quick. I know the code references that the surface should be basically of a permanent material.
Just curious. I'm impressed that you want to come back to Pecosin, which is great, and I walked down there today. Are you going to be able to operate your business in that small space? Because it is pretty confined.
So let's hold the questions till we open the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll just, I found what I was looking for. You'll see E, under the conditions, parking areas, if required, shall be surfaced in accordance with the city site plan on it.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. I'm impressed that you got four neighbors. That's awesome. Good job.
One question, Thomas. Were there any negative letters received from...
I did not receive any comments from any persons that received an adjacent letter that were against the approval of the application.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, let's open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who...
I think he had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Dave.
That's okay. Just had a comment. Canelo, I found your presentation to be very thorough and answered all the questions that I had. Thank you for that, and my compliments on the job. Well done.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address this issue. Caleb?
Sorry, you're okay?
Yes, sir.
Well, good evening. My name is Caleb Howard. I'm a resident here of Pecosin. I live off of Rebbeody Lane, just around Fort Worth, Florida. I went to school here all my life, graduated from Pecosin High School, now my family's in O'Nell, and I will stay here until I go nowhere. A little bit about me, I manage a company called Topstream Exterior. Been business about six years. We do everything from exterior maintenance to minor construction, and, you know, keep sailing and going in the right direction with that. Our business currently resides in Yorktown, right off of Ocean Drive, pretty close to the Yorktown Walmart out there, with Lisa Shop right now. In April of 2022, in April of 2022, I purchased 789 Pecosin Avenue in hopes of bringing our business back to town. We would use the lot for truck parking and the existing structure for material storage What we found was, even though the property does share a property line with the Ford dealership Reggins Ford, it is owned residential, and with the zoning of the property, I require a conditional use permit. With the use of the permit, or I'm sorry, with the use of the property, I am required to screen off the property, which I totally understand. But due to the size and the layout of the property, we found that the buffers with the fence being off the property line would make the property very difficult to operate and, you know, pull trucks in and out, and, you know, just overall function of, you know, the mornings and afternoons. the mornings and afternoons. When putting up a fence or screening on the sides, like I said, it would be tough to exercise the buffers, and so we are asking if we could simply put a fence on the property line where existing fences already are provided by the neighboring properties. So, simply just tying into or budding up to the existing fencing, which we, you know, asked permission by the surrounding neighbors, and they were okay with that. The 60 Street, the 60-foot street buffer from the front, that's totally doable. I mean, we could work with that as well as the landscape buffer on the front, the 15-foot You know, along with the granted permit, like I said, we're asking for the fence, you know, to be installed on the property line. You know, like I said, we did ask if the neighbors were okay with that, and they said that was cool. You know, just kind of to recap and kind of sum this up, you know, it's a great opportunity for our small family business to be able to bring it back to town and not have to commute to Yorktown. You know, like I said, this is where we call home. So, other than that, I appreciate y'all having me here tonight and allowing me to talk. I'm not sure if you guys have any questions for me.
Find out right there, Caleb.
All right.
Other questions? Keith?
Like I said before, I'm impressed that you want to come back here and do this. I walked the property today, and it's going to be a great place for it. Are you going to be able to operate in that small space?
Yes, sir. So, one thing that we eliminated after purchasing this property was trailers. Trying to do a three-point term of trailers, it's pretty tricky. So, we went to box trucks and just truck mounts and stuff like that for our equipment and material storage. And one thing that I noticed looking at, not necessarily this plan, but the one that Thomas presented with the red lines all over it, is that the property line is actually a little bit far as wherever. There's a shared ditch between me and Mr. Riggins there, and some of that asphalt entryway right there, which you call a driveway or whatnot, is actually 100% on the property of ours. So, once I found that out, that was even more reassuring and, you know, letting me know that, hey, this can work, we can use this property. So, you know, we got pretty excited about that. So, yes, yes, sir, to answer your question.
Other questions, Caleb?
I just want to say thank you for coming back to Pecosa, and I'll, you know, within reason, within our legal authority, I don't want to create any more hoops for you to... I'm very impressed by your tenacity, and I appreciate it. So, I know we're going to vote, but I definitely don't want to do anything else to make you have to jump through any more hoops.
Thank you.
I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
All right, Caleb, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right. That will close the public hearing and ask... I'm sorry. Are there other speakers? I'm sorry. I didn't think... All right, we'll close the public hearing and ask for most of the council.
I propose a resolution to approve the conditional use permit for the operation of a storage yard to be located at 789 Pecosa Avenue, tax map parcel 19-1-135, owned R2 single family residence.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have most of the things seconded. We adopt the resolution. Any comments, concerns? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fox?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Let's move on to new business. First item is the resolution of the city council approving the city's participation in proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Teva, Alligan, Walmart, Walgreens, CBS, and their related corporate entities, and directing the city attorney and/or the city's outside council to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlements. Wayne, is that yours?
Yes. As you may know, there are a number of these settlements that have come our way. Several of them we've already, our claims have been paid on. This is the most recent settlement, and they require that you authorize the settlement to take place. It's a uniform settlement. It includes, I think, every jurisdiction in Virginia, which was organized by the attorney council. I definitely recommend that, no reason for us not to participate, but not want to proceed separately from the class action. So, we should probably join in and receive our distribution on this over a number of years.
All the confidence in the world in you, Mr. Moore. Any questions, Wayne? Okay, there's a resolution we need to act on. Can you get a motion, but we'll leave it.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend a resolution of the city council approving of the city's participation in a proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against TV, T-E-V-A, or Teva, Alligan, Walmart, Walgreens, CBS, and their related corporation, I'm sorry, corporate entities, and directing the city attorney and/or the city's outside council to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in these...
All right. Thank you, Kerry. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, unless you may second, we adopt the resolution. Other comments, concern, questions? If not, Ms. Kim.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fox?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Item two under new business, resolution authorizing submission, FY 2022 Safer Grant for the hiring of six firefighters.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Battalion Chief Breeden, I think, is going to actually do the bulk of this presentation of a couple of comments after he's finished. I would also note to you that our chief and deputy chief are both here, should you have questions of that.
Okay.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, this evening, we brought before you a resolution to allow us to participate in the FY 22 Safer Grant. The Safer Grant is intended for hiring firefighters, to put it quite bluntly. In this, and as you read in your brief, this gives us an immediate opportunity, if awarded, to bring six additional firefighters on board. We are rapidly approaching a point where we need additional staff. We have new developments coming in, our call volumes are going up, number of structured fires is increasing, and that's through nobody's individual fault, just more people, more things. So, what this will do is it will pay for salaries and benefits for these firefighters for a period of three years, and that's three years of 36 months, period of performance grant from the time that we actually were awarded, if awarded. So, that means we would have to act pretty quickly in hiring and bringing on individuals and then we can pay for the training and all that that goes along with it. But that boils down to roughly $2.1 million savings to the city over that three-year period for six firefighters. Obviously, give or take, depending on level of certification, but that's, we figure, to the high end of it, just to protect ourselves. The reason that we are requesting six is that pushes us closer to NFPA 1710. 1710 is, while it's not a law, it's the standard by which we are judged. As a department that responds with more, greater than 50% of our staff being career staff now, times have changed through the years, we're more closely tied to 1710 than 1720, which guides the staffing and response for volunteer organizations. What that means to us is bluntly, they want, with the new standard, for a residential structure fire, 17 people on the scene within the first eight minutes. That's a lofty goal. The good part is we do have excellent mutual aid agreements with our surrounding partners, and those numbers help bolster that. But this is merely the first step, and with this step, if you are so inclined to allow us to move forward with that, the second part is to have a letter of intent that we would retain those positions after the period of performance for the grant. It used to be a requirement of the grant to submit. It's no longer a requirement, but it is still extremely thought of in order to have that. It's definitely going to put you in a better position. I've reached out to some surrounding jurisdictions, some individuals that I know, one individual in particular that was a, sat on the selection board for this grant at one point in time, and have solicited input also from her, and she's more than willing to help us any way that she can. So, with that being said, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Chief, one question. What, I understand what the six will do, but how many do you actually need to agree with NFPA?
Again, NFPA 1710 puts us wanting 17 firefighters there in the first eight minutes.
With these six, how many would you...
That puts us at 12.
12, okay.
On shift, which would bring minimum staffing to 10, would bring our minimum staffing to 10. It definitely closes the gap from where we're at today with a minimum staffing of eight.
And, you know, Robert and Mike, and you as well, Chief, I don't see how you can lose here. I don't think there's, at least in the last two years, any grant that you folks have applied for, you've gotten. And I don't have any doubts you get this one as well. So, that's a job well done. You saved the city tons of money by writing those grants and doing it in a professional manner, and somebody's listening to you, and I'm glad that they are. And I just don't have any idea that we would turn this down to... Other questions, comments?
I have questions. Would it be, would it be fair to say that mutual response delay, mutual aid delays your response time?
It does not delay our initial response time. It may delay the overall collection of fire personnel on the scene. We have, through the years, pretty well established ourselves to be able to quickly get on scene and take action. As everybody's familiar, we just recently had the structural fire involving the childcare center, and with the support of our law enforcement, who acted admirably and helped with the evacuation of the kids and everybody that was in the building, that allowed us to get on scene and go to work and rapidly do our job. So, we're still getting there, we're still doing our job. We could be more efficient at doing our job.
Right. Excuse me, I should have said, does it delay your total number?
Yes.
Because if people are working and you don't have enough to meet your standards, then you're relying on mutual aid to meet those standards, correct? And would it be fair to say that if they're tied up on another call, they wouldn't be available to come to you for quite...
That's also correct. And as we move forward, society as a whole, their call, as our call numbers are going up, their call numbers are going up. We have always been able to get them here. Sometimes we have to wait for a different station, and maybe York Station 2 is not in, and we're waiting on York Station 1, or our resources from Hampton to assist. But we've got a great partnership with them. They help us, and when we can, we help them, because they're fighting the same fight we are.
And you need additional personnel, because obviously people have to take time off, and they call in sick, training.
That's part of any, any business is, we have to have the people in the seats to do the job, and like you say, sometimes people are sick, they're hurt, they just want to have a day with their family. And, you know, while, you know, it's looked at, we work 10 days a month.
But we know y'all actually work more than that, right? Because you're called in on your day off.
Well, not necessarily called in, but we do, we do support our department. You know, if we are off duty and we can't help, we help fill the gaps, and that's because we've got a group of firefighters and medics that believe in their department, they believe in the city they work for. That's why we're drawing people from other localities to come here, because they want to be part of this and make it better.
Other questions?
I do. First, a comment. I think you've done an excellent job, Gay, and this looks like it will go a long ways toward helping us meet the goals that we are trying to attain. But my question actually is of the city manager, okay? Randy, and I'm sorry, I should have talked to you about this first. It's going to also require that the city hire six employees on their payroll, okay, after three years, okay? And that may impact the city's ability to hire employees in other departments, okay? But even at that, do you see this as a positive thing, Randy?
Absolutely, because it, first of all, this sounds, I don't mean it, it wouldn't be on the agenda if I didn't. What I wanted to say in asking to reserve comments after Joe DeRico was, one, to give you a sense of, you may recall, we have tried this before in smaller increments, and the feedback that we've gotten was we weren't moving aggressively enough, so this is one of the odd situations where more is better. The other thing to resist in any grant is simply going after something as you can. So, I think this gets back to your question, Mr. Southall, where are we going with or without this grant? And it is my intention, and that we move in this direction, and at the end of three years, with or without the grant, that we're, that we would be there anyway. Now, obviously, that requires a lot of council approvals along the way, but if we can get somebody to pay for the three years, then we can get these positions up and running quicker and at less expense to us than if we did it two a year for the next three years. It would cost us more money and delay our ability to get there. And the last thing I would say, and Joe spoke to most of this, but when I came here, we, our minimum staffing was six.
Yes.
And through your efforts and our department, we've gone to eight, and this is the, this is the logical next progression. We've seen, both of our public safety agencies particularly, how thin we can be when things don't go well. By don't go well, I mean COVID in this particular instance. The sheer, the sheer numbers of, or lack thereof, of the folks that we have make us particularly vulnerable. This will make us stronger.
Very good. It sounded good from my perspective, but I didn't know about the city's perspective and the overall plan, so it sounds good to me, and thank you very much.
All right, other questions, other comments? Joe, thank you very much. Well done. Okay, we can use a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of FY 2022 Safer Grant for the hiring of six firefighters.
All right, thanks, Keith. All right, we have motion made second, we adopt the resolution. Any other questions or concerns, any other comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fox?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Thank you, folks. We really appreciate you. All right, let's move on to item three. It's an ordinance making additional appropriations of this year 2023, and authorize the city manager into a contract with Pimbo Construction for the South Lawson Multi-Use Path. Terrence? Terrence is going to do it. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Hassel and council members. Tonight for your consideration is the South Lawson Multi-Use Path Project. As you know, this has been an ongoing project for some time now, and in 2011, the city applied for CMAC funding, and in 2019, the funding was received for this project. The city started this project with the design being completed by Timmins Group. This new path will be a paved, six-foot-wide asphalt multi-use path at just under a half a mile long, and it will tie into the existing path at the entrance of the park and at the rear park near the pond. Once the design was completed, the city had to comply with all of the BDOT requirements to prepare an invitation for bid. to prepare an invitation for bid document. This required an extensive amount of documentation and approval time through VDOT. The city issued an invitation for bid, which closed on February 10th, 2023. We received one bid from Pembroke Construction in the amount of $162,003.75. The total grant appropriated in the capital projects fund was $195,100. The project incurred $38,714.63 in design and preliminary engineering expenses with Timmons Group. This leaves $156,385.37 in the project budget. In order to cover the full construction bid, we will utilize $5,618.38 in the engineering services allocated for this fiscal year to cover the professional services. Once we presented the bid to VDOT for review and approval, we learned that an additional $33,424 is required as a local match for this project. This includes $17,224 for VDOT oversight during preliminary engineering phase as well as during the construction. The remaining $16,200 is for contingencies. This project was initially 100% funded by VDOT, but we must adhere to VDOT's requirements as it relates to engineering and other costs. As a result of this, along with inflation in material costs that we have all experienced since COVID, the cost to complete the project has exceeded the initial budget as anticipated in 2011 and was awarded in 2019. Therefore, you have an ordinance to appropriate the additional $33,424, which is the $17,224 for the South Lawson Park Multi-Use Path Project and for the VDOT oversight. And the $16,200, we're asking for South Lawson Park contingency. So in the event this contingency amount is not needed for this project, it can be utilized towards any other South Lawson Park projects. Additionally, this ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with Pembroke Construction in the amount of $162,03.75 for the construction of the South Lawson Park Multi-Use Path. If city council does not elect to appropriate the additional funding or authorize entering into the construction contract, the city would be required to repay VDOT the $38,714.63 that has been received that we had already spent. Garrett will be the inspector from the city on this project and he is here tonight as well. So either one of us would be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Any questions to Tara, Keith?
The, the, I, I had gone by the engineer last month and got a picture, diagram. So it's only going to be the highlighted pathways, not around the back of the pond?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I knew there was a problem with the back flooding and all that stuff. Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Tara, that was well done. Thank you very much. Okay, we have an ordinance there and if someone?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2023 and authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Pembroke Construction for South Lawson Park Multi-Use Path.
All right, sir, thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made, second, we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments, other questions? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilwoman Fox?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. I'd afford a new business, an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2023 for the general fund. Is that you, Tara?
That's me.
Again?
You gave me again.
There are many to work tonight.
Pure, pure, if we bring donations that are received for appropriation. So the first two items are for the library received $3,865 in donations and the fire department received 500, so they would be used for the intended purpose. The community recreation and economic development office has received a Virginia Tourism Corporation Grant totaling $30,000. And this will be used in four ways. $3,500 to upgrade the current visitpecosa.com website. $14,225 towards the kickoff summer event in June 2023. You remember last year was the first year we did that, so that would bring that back this year, which would include fireworks, live music, and other community activities. $7,875 to enhance the promotional videos and $4,400 for support of Pecosa museum events such as Haunts of Pecosa and America Goes to War. And then additionally, we have recognized $50,000 in additional interest income this year and would like to utilize that in two ways. The first is an additional $16,000 is needed for the kickoff summer event. So this would be combined with the $14,000 from the Virginia Tourism Grant towards that event. And the second item is $34,000 is needed for a sand filter replacement at the municipal pool. We believe the current filter has been in place for about 40 years and so it's exceeded its useful life and it needs replacement prior to the full season. So you have the ordinance to make these additional appropriations totaling $84,365 for fiscal year 2023 in the general fund. And I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions to Tara? All right. Any non, someone have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2023 in the general fund as outlined here.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made, second, we adopt the ordinance. Any additional questions? Okay, Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fox?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Let's move on to item five. It's an ordinance for fiscal year 2023 for general fund burn justice assistance grant funding. Police Department Chief, that's yours?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
All right.
I'll be brief. This is one of those good opportunities where I get to come and ask you to let me spend money that's freaking doesn't cost.
I got you, I got you.
As I've spoken on before, the burn justice assistance grant makes federal funds available to localities to help support efforts to reduce crime and improve public safety. And the, a certain portion of that funding is given to the Department of Criminal Justice Services to give out to the localities across the state. On February 8th, we received notice from DCJS that we had been awarded $2,520 for this federal fiscal year 22 funds. And, and what we intend to do with that is buy new flashlights for our patrol officers. The, the current issued flashlight is no longer in production. It was a fine light, it very disappointed me greatly when they quit making it and so we can't get parts or anything like that, so we need to replace those. So we're going to make use of these funds for that purpose.
Okay. Any questions to the chief? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, is there a motion?
Sir, I move we adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept the burn justice assistance grant and make additional appropriations for fiscal year 2023 for the general fund.
All right, we have a motion made, second, we adopt the ordinance. Other concerns, comments? Any questions? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fox?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. Comments to the city manager, that would be you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A few things this evening. I would note to you that in addition to the staff you've seen at the, at the podium, both our Dave Callis and Gretchen Gokene are here as well. I want to thank them for their work both on the June event, which will be the second in our series, but also their work on the grant that got us the, the funding to fund half of that as well as the museum item update to the website and a refresh of our awesome Pecosa news play video. It's, it's great, but it's a little dated, so we'll bring that up to date. A few other things, I wanted to express appreciation to both the vice mayor and councilman Hucks. I am their collective alternate on the EV RIFA and future, their near-perfect attendance over the years, I have very seldom ever had to go, which is good for me, but better for the community because these two gentlemen have been there at every stage of that EV RIF and have positioned us, I think, very well. I'm pleased to note to you that on the heels of the contract that you authorized my executing in behalf for the South Lawson Park, the next thing on that, and it should be out on the street very shortly, is the procurement for the establishment of the outdoor basketball court there at South.